Order. And we'll start out on this the Thursday, December 4th at 6:00 PM for the trustee appointment,[24.41][24.41]interviews. And we'll go ahead and start off and ask if there's any additions, corrections, modifications, or substitutions to the current agenda.
I have it.
All right. Well, we'll dive right in with the opening remarks. Thank you for being here. Thank you for volunteering to help us out on the board and to assist our youth in their education, to put forth the policies in order to help them succeed. We would invite you to go ahead and use the microphones, if you don't mind.
They might not now have. Button on the top. Johnny, write up.
I don't think I'm gonna need a microphone.
It's not necessarily for us, but because it's being webcast.
It has to pick up for the broadcast.
You can turn it on and if you've got a green light, it's on and you can mute it by hitting the button once and it'll go to orange and it'll be muted that way. But the way that the board has chosen to do this in the past and is sticking with it, we have, oh, a dozen or so questions that we'll go ahead and ask you. Ms. Kaufman will be the facilitator in asking the questions. And we'll probably start with Mr. Galgano. Actually, before we get that, we'll allow you to introduce yourselves. We'll start with Mr. Galgano and go through the line. And then we'll start in with the questions and we'll rotate on who begins those questions. The same questions will be asked to each candidate and we as a board will then be able to take notes and to...
Conjure date.
There we go. Think about, think about your strengths and how that would assist us on the board. After the questions are over, we'll give you guys an opportunity to ask the board any questions you might have of us, as well as any follow-up questions the board might have of you. At that time, we will go ahead and have a ballot for each of the board members and we'll go to that point. So with that, Mr. Galgano, would you please introduce yourself?
First of all, Sean, Mr. Galgano is my dad. My name's Johnny Galgano, Superintendent Holmes, member of the board. Ladies and gentlemen in attendance, my name is John Galgano and I am here today to seek the position of board member for Zone Four. I've been a Wood River Valley resident since 1982 after gladly accepting an invitation to come here with a couple of women that I was working with up in Alaska on a ship. I have a wide range of reasons and varied interests in running for the school board. I have, in my past life and work experiences, there'll be beneficial asset to the board. I bring a lot of valuable experience to the table. I am a retired captain from the United States Merchant Marine after 30 years of service. I'm a former employee of Blaine County School District. My scope of work within the maritime industry, as well as the school district, has left me with numerous skills in effective management, attention to detail, collaborative discussion, and a mind for forward planning. With that in mind, I would ask you to prudently ascertain my qualifications and to appoint me to your board. I look forward to speaking with all of you more and sharing my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mason?
Yes, I'm Kirk Mason and I'm here to volunteer for the vacancy on Zone Four. I don't see a vacant chair, though. I don't know if it's out in the hall or not.
We've got plenty of chairs.
But I found myself on the sidelines recently because my past was always working with children and with kids of all ages. And so the last three or four years, I've just been on the sidelines, kind of observing the kids in the valley, mostly through the newspapers, attending their performances and activities and however I did, just to keep my hand in, because my interest is still there for kids. It's always been one of my focal points in, yeah, since I've moved into the valley here. I've been here about since 1980, '79, I think, you know? I am here as an invested taxpayer, too, because I understand we also have to represent that entity of our community. And I've, in my past life, I guess, before I retired, I was, I worked for the Parks Department for the city of Ketchum. So kids were, was my life. And I think it was kind of neat because I had parallel attitudes with the Blaine County Rec or Blaine County School District, excuse me, where all kids were accepted, we were very concerned about their welfare. So that's just second nature for me, that that's my thinking, to go that direction. And also during that job, I was physically responsible because I had to obviously do a budget, which has made three or four decimal points to the right of yours, but nonetheless, there were some political interests and whatnot. So I've had that experience doing that. And I think what actually really excites me about wanting to be on the board is the goals that you've set forth with your interest in the academic improvement of kids equally, whether they're really smart or getting in house struggling, or you're interested in, you know, innovation if it's necessary, whatever it is, and the teacher training, because that's where it starts, teachers, you know? They've got to inspire those kids. And I think the way the world is now, sometimes you just scratch your head and go, what are these, aren't you just thinking out there, you know? So hopefully, I can help you make some decisions that will implement a lot of the policies. There's a lot of really great dialogue out there. I know Dr. Holmes has read your state of the district, some really great ideas. It would be, I'd really be an honor to maybe put those into action.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Clayton?
All right. My name's Rob Clayton. I'd like to thank my two colleagues up here for taking on the opportunity to try to become the next, to fill the vacancy for District Four, because I think that's sat idle for probably too long in all of your opinion. And that's upstanding of both of them to take that on, in my opinion. So kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
I myself, I just have lived here for a year and a half. I came to be the executive director of the Education Foundation, which is a significant youth organization within the valley. We currently this year, we're serving 530 athletes of school age within the Blaine County School District, which is pretty significant. It's about one-sixth of your population. So I'm familiar with actually a fair amount of students that are within the school district itself. So that's what brought me here. But to give you a little bit of my background, I came here from Park City, Utah, where I was the headmaster, head of school for an independent high school for 11 years. And that school is called the Winter Sports School in Park City. I also, while I was in Park City, was involved with the public system in that I was elected to the community council of my daughter's elementary school, which is a body within the school governance that is responsible for the distribution of the state land tax, which is, the state has a bunch of land trust, which has a bunch of properties all over Utah, which are grazing lands or oil lands or whatever. So each school receives a subsidy from that trust and that trust for the school that I was in charge of was about $35,000 or so. So you would distribute that to higher aides or do educational projects. And you're also responsible for the educational plan for that school, reviewing all the test data, so on and so forth, and then putting that back out. So I had that experience within the public system there. And actually, when I left the Winter Sports School in Park City, the legacy I left behind of that school was I was, it was probably the first time a private school had gone public. I went through the process of taking that school to the State Office of Education and making it a charter school, did the application and ran that through the system. And we were actually, we were approved two out of 12, I think, that applied at that time. And the school that got the highest rating was a school for unwed mothers in Logan, Utah, which was, that was a very charitable cause. Ours was not quite of that high of a nature, but we came through pretty clean on that one. And it was an interesting process because the school that I was in charge of was very unique and unorthodox and it actually was approved rather rapidly. What led up to that decision was we actually, I worked very closely with the superintendent of the district that the school that I was in charge of was in and tried to become a district-dependent charter at that time. And as through that process, I got pretty familiar with the inner workings of school board, school board relationships, so on and so forth, and also the relationships between the administration of the district and the school board. And so we were unable to actually, in the end, to get it approved as a district-dependent charter. So we then went to the state and that was how that all transpired. So that's my immediate experience with this type of work and what you all are doing and what I've done there. Prior to that, I was a ski coach and I also had been a teacher and administrator in some private schools back east. So that's roughly my background. My interest in this is I really have a passion for education. I obviously did it for a good portion of my life. Being in charge of the Ski Education Foundation is a big responsibility. It's athletic and orientation, but it's bigger than that. It's about character and quality of the individuals that we have in our program and what we can do for them and provide the programming to make them better people. But there's, I still have a pretty soft spot in my heart for education. I witnessed the way this, you know, in the last year, I've seen what trials and tribulations you all had to go through with people in, people out, people in, people out. I think it's difficult. And so I threw my hat into the ring because I feel I could help you and I would like to help you. And I think I have the skill set that you could utilize in the best interest of all the students in the district and the district proper. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll move forward with the questions, Ms. Kaufman.
Let me just tell you how we're gonna do this. You gotta get my microphone on. I don't have a watch shirt on. I'm gonna start with the first question and I'm gonna put it up on the board so you can always see it if you want to refer back while we're doing the first question, second, third, et cetera. I'll start with, can I address you all by your first names?
Please.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll start with Johnny on the first question. You'll each get a chance to answer that question as we go along. And then on the second question, we'll start with Kirk and we'll go that way, rotating fashion, so you'll all have the same amount of time to look at and think about the question. And Tim, where did you put this on here?
It's in the, if you can see the electronic reader, it's on the first one on the top right there.
There we go.
Before we get started, are you able to see Mr. or Johnny?
Yes.
Okay.
If you need to scoot your chair. Right light there, but I think. Okay. So Johnny, we're gonna start with you. What are the board's roles and responsibilities of those responsibilities? What do you think is the number one job?
Well, I don't think I know it rote, but I think that the board's roles and responsibilities are basically, they create the policies and procedures and ensure their implementation. They also, I would imagine, are responsible for passing that information on to the superintendent and to ensure that she basically, or he basically, carries out those wishes. As far as being the number one responsibility or the number one job, I think then you just got to point to the kids. And basically, your responsibility is to make sure that the students in the school district are looked after 24/7, 365.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kirk?
Oh, the board's roles are definitely policy-setting, you know, to get the input from the superintendent and other bodies and try to put that into a policy that will benefit all the kids. And I think the number one responsibility is to make it fair. You really got to have equal time for every entity in our school. And I think that would be the number one job to, yeah, these kids going on the right track.
Thank you. Rob?
Well, I view it as a role of governance. There's three main topics I think we're responsible for, as Johnny said, policy and procedure, budgeting, and then the oversight hiring, the management of the superintendent, business manager, or the purview of the board.
Okay. Ready for number two?
Actually, I forgot to answer the second half of the question.
Yeah. Oh, number one job.
The number one job is probably being loyal to your constituency and being aware of what, that you're an elected official and you're working for the people.
Lori?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Never mind. I was just gonna say, it looks like he's got it in pages, so if you just go page down, it'll probably go to the next page.
That's why I did the full page. I realized. I was caught there. Okay. So Kirk, we'll start with you on question number two. What qualities do you possess that would contribute to our board?
Well, I think mostly I know a good idea when I see it, because I always try to develop my own. So I think that's important when good ideas are put before us, we're able to maybe possibly turn that into a policy that benefits the kids. I'm very fair-minded. I'm well-balanced. I can listen to both sides. I don't have an agenda, so I'm definitely open to some good ideas.
Rob?
Well, I think, I'll give you three. First is I believe I'm a pretty strategic thinker. I like to look forward. I like to figure out, look at goals and then figure out and assess how we would reach goals and achieve them. Another one is I feel I'm pretty creative and I wouldn't say unorthodox, but creative to the point of looking at problem-solving from the perspective of how do you fix things? How do you improve things? How do you make it better? And creativity, I think, is important in that. And I think that, if I could read my writing, I had the last one written down. The creativity is important. I believe it at that. I think that strategic thinking, creativity, and actually being, I can read my writing now, being fair and honest in all decision-making process.
Thank you. Johnny?
I think that no job is too hard when it's broken down into small pieces. I think there's two ways to do things, the right way and again. I guess my attention to detail, I'm kind of in a retentive. I believe in prior proper planning prevents poor performance and I believe in forward planning. In my previous career, my world basically worked four months ahead of time. So the day that I got on a ship, I was thinking about what I was going to be doing four months later. So that's pretty much how I do things. So I think if I came on the board, some of those qualities would be what I would bring.
Thank you. Okay. We'll start with Rob on the next question. Do you have sufficient time and energy to devote to this position and explain?
I think I did homework on that one. I do believe I do. I called Lori up and asked her what would be the time commitment for this role. And she estimated it would be somewhere between seven and 15 hours a month. Could be more, could be less. I imagine it'll probably be a little more than that. But that will work within my current job structure and time I have. I can find the time to do that. She told me the main responsibility would be to be sure to be well-read and prepared for every meeting. I'll share anecdotal story with you at a later time about being at a board meeting with an unprepared board. And I would never do that to the person on the other side who had materials that were going to be decided upon. Do you have the energy? No question. I have the energy to do it.
Thank you. Johnny?
Well, having recently retired from the school district and doing some consulting now, I have time on my hands. With regards to energy, my day starts at oh, dark 30, and it ends at oh, dark 30. There's no question about me being able to do a job. And having worked with the Marine Corps for a number of years, we don't look at watches. When the work's done, that's when we knock off. So I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Kirk?
Time is definitely on my side. I'm retired, so I don't have any other commitments at the moment. And so I definitely have time. I know it's going to take a lot of time to study and get up to speed on a lot of issues. And as far as energy goes, just working with kids or for them energizes me a lot. So I, yes, I have energy.
Okay. Johnny?
Yes, ma'am.
Is membership on the board of education compatible with your present position? What are your potential conflicts of interest for you in your current situation and how would you handle them?
My present position, I'm doing some consulting work in my previous career in the maritime industry. I see no conflict there. As far as potential conflicts for my current situation, if there were any, basically, I'm pretty transparent, always have been. My wife always says that I'm black, but I try to be black and white. So, you know, with that in mind, if there's something there, you'll know about it. But, you know, my son goes to the high school. He's a sophomore. I worked at the high school for the last five years. So, you know, I'm familiar with the way things are done and what's going on. But no, I don't see any potential conflicts. And again, if there was a conflict, you'd be the first to know about it.
Thank you. And if you want me to repeat the question anytime, please let me know. So Kirk?
Oh, no. My present situation is totally compatible with being on the board of education. The only conflict it might be is I do receive a check from Percy. I don't know if that is or not, but I look at it as I'm actually working for the state anyway, so that's it.
Rob?
I think my current position is very compatible, actually, because I'm working with the youth of the valley as the school system is, so there's a lot of synergy that you have there. Conflicts of interest, I don't see many, but if there were, they obviously would be handled in a transparent fashion. If there were issues that were impacting my work or had a conflict with what the school district was trying to do, I would recuse myself from any decision that would come along in those cases and make that clear prior to.
Okay. Thank you. And Kirk, describe your personal experience and involvement with the Blaine County School District Public Schools and if not in Blaine County School District, experience in other schools.
Well, I do have some experience. I do have a teacher certificate. Got it from the University of Nevada Reno. When I first moved to town, I did substitute teacher at Wood River High School. I've also been a tennis coach for the Wood River High School tennis team for about five years. And while I was working for the city parks, we partnered with Hemingway School a lot to do joint programs. So yeah, I've got a lot of experience with the schools and the kids.
Rob?
I have three children in the system, so that's my personal experience from the get-go. So the first visit we made when we came up here, actually, to visit the Wood River Valley from Park City was, first stop was the Wood River Middle School, second stop was Hemingway, and third stop was Brian Gallagher, the swimming coach. That was in that order. People would know that. And then I went, then obviously I went to work. That's the extent of my involvement. I've actually had a little bit of involvement with the district through the middle school, working with them to create sort of a program that would work with the winter sport athletes who attended middle school and transportation and timing of day, so it's less interruptive, less invasive, and actually successfully worked that with Fritz. And Mike has been very helpful in that matter, too. And we've broken some really good ground there as far as accessibility to winter sport for students of the district. So I have that experience as well.
Thank you. Johnny?
Well, with the exception of my work experience at the high school and in the district, I was a substitute teacher when I first retired from shipping for a year. Then I took the job at the high school. I worked two years as a parapro and special ed. And then when Jeannie Bradshaw retired, I went into the billing tech rep position for three years. I had a lot of work that I did there at the high school, so there's a number of things. My son's been in the school district. My wife has been on the PTA since my son was in elementary school. So we're involved. Also, a few years back, I went back to my college, New York Maritime College. I was a watch officer. We have a training ship that goes out to sea. It takes the cadets out. They learn how to basically put practical experience to their knowledge. And I worked with the students there. They're all college-age, which was good. I've coached here at the high school. I coached lacrosse. I played it as a kid, all through, basically from sixth grade right through college. So I've done that. Yeah, I'm involved with the school district. I've had a lot of good personal experience, both at the high school with kids and sports, and then again, also, you know, with my alma mater, if you will.
Okay. Thank you. Rob, what is the purpose of public education?
To prepare the youth of America to be the best possible citizens that they can be and to contribute to the fabric of the nation as they move on through their lives. That really is, to me, what public education is for. And I think all education is responsible for developing the future of this entire nation. Simple.
Johnny?
I think that pretty, public education, basically, we're here to prepare the students, the children, the next generation, if you will, basically to pick up the baton and move forward. And we're basically responsible to make sure that that gets done. Because if we don't, who is going to lead? Who is going to follow us? And I think that's the purpose of public education. I think that in general is education. And when I was on a ship for 30 years, it was an education. It was a learning environment. When I got there, I really didn't know much, except for the stuff that they taught me at school. It wasn't practical. So for the first 10 years, you're just trying to figure out what you've been learning. And then for the next 10 years, you're basically kind of collaborating. And then for the last 10 years, you're basically educating. So I think that's what public education is. You basically passing on information to other people so that they can be the best they can be.
Thank you. Kirk?
I think, you know, that's, I agree with both my colleagues here, but I also realize that public education is a means to where a child, when he gets out of school, will actually have options. They won't be stuck in one little rut. They'll be able to expand their horizons, improve their lives, and to be in charge of their own destiny, more or less. If we're talking public against private, at least we need to make it so it can be an equal, so they have an equal chance when they get out of there. Mostly, it's for me, the options that they'll have is very crucial.
Johnny, even though all trustees represent the entire district, what are the current concerns of stakeholders in Zone Four?
I can't tell you. I don't know. I have not done any questioning of members in Zone Four. My wife told me that I should basically look into this seat and I agreed with her because having worked in the school district and, you know, looking at things and seeing how things are done, I think there's places you can do better, not you in particular, the school district. Again, it does come from you. But I don't know of any particular concerns of stakeholders in Zone Four. I have not canvassed anyone.
Kirk?
Well, from my involvement, living and working in Zone Four, one thing I do know for a fact is the parents are very adamant that their children receive a good education and a fair one and are treated, you know, with respect. That I know. That must just have been a personal experience. I was hoping that what would be nice is, I know there's this, we're doing a, you're doing a survey, online survey, and I wish we had something like that that actually was broken down by zones, so we'd kind of have some other idea of really what our zones want. But I haven't figured out. I would, I will find out. If I'm appointed, I'll go out and start, you know, talking to people, as far as I know at the moment.
Rob?
I could not tell you from the stakeholders' perspective, other than my own perspective, anecdotally, what the concerns for Zone Four would be. No one's reached out to me prior to this meeting to say, hey, this is what's on my mind, this is what's in my mind. I would be obviously open to that with the appointment, so that would be, I think, a pretty significant part of the role any of us would have if we were to get this position. Personally, I think for the district, the concern should be shrinkage. I think that the demographic in that zone is probably drying up a little bit. I think you're going to find less youth. I think you're going to find a bit of underutilization of facility. And I think that's going to be a concern, something to look at down the road, how you're going to manage that. That would be my observation.
Okay. Thank you. Kirk, what specific changes do you want to make in the school district policies, programs, or curricula, and why? And then you might want to tell us how you go about making those changes or any other future changes.
Well, that's something I would have to study. I could just say right off the top of my head, I don't have any changes in mind. I was going to wait and see how things go and put the results of all this, need to start studying a little bit more. If there's any changes to be made, obviously, it would have to just be a cooperative effort through everybody. And I think changes... And I think changes would have to probably go more for maybe the, not necessarily come for the board, but maybe from the school administrators themselves.
Thank you. Rob?
I would definitely say I came to this meeting and to this conversation with no agenda at all. And so, without an agenda, I'm here to actually learn and see, and see what the issues truly are that are on the front burner right now, see what they would be, and then address them appropriately in the role I would have, and that would be collegially with the other members of the board and with the input of the key administrators within the district. Making future changes, those initiatives would, that would be listening to the constituency that I would be representing, obviously, what their concerns would be, what changes they would want to see, having that discussion, bringing those forward, seeing if they're viable or not, and then having that conversation as a board if there are things to deal with in programs and curriculum. Personally, I think the district is doing a pretty fine job. When I look at some statistics, I see the high schools rated number two in the state. Cary High School is number four in the state. So two of the high schools in the district are in the top four in the state. That's a pretty good record. That's a pretty good indicator, because most of your data points are available at the high school level. Things are, seem to be working fairly well. I'm sure there's improvements that can be made, but you're doing a good job.
Thank you. Johnny?
Well, having read Superintendent's 67-page document on the Listening Tour, I think there are some changes that we can partake in. My previous experience in my career that I've noted, and what I see here lacking, is that we have policy and we don't have procedure. And if you have a policy, my experience, you have a procedure on how it's basically executed, so that it's not left to the individual who is reading it and possibly interpreting it in their own fashion. Now, I sailed on a lot of different ships for the same company, and we always had an operations procedures manual. And basically, it was the same procedure regardless of the ship, so that we did things the same way. And everyone who was on those ships did things the same way. So basically, it wasn't left to interpretation, but rather execution. And my experience with the school district and the policies, that we don't necessarily back up the policy with the procedure. And then what happens there is it gets left to the person who is reading it. So whether it's the vice principal at the high school, or the principal at the middle school, or a teacher at Cary High School, however they read it or possibly interpret it, and they might put it into practice in a different way. So I think that would be something that I would certainly be interested in looking at and reviewing. Now, I have noted, in the last year, I'm seeing more policy with procedure. But, you know, there's a lot more to be done. So as far as going about those changes and any other future changes, I think it's basically simple dialogue. Make sure you know what the issue is, try to find the solution, and then in a expeditious manner, execute it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rob, describe the process you use to make decisions.
Love to. This is a great question. So we have a military man here. I'm not a military guy, but one of the most striking moments I had in my coaching career was looking into determining a way to come up with a motivational strategy. I'm in the gym, I can't remember what time it was, I was in a gym, and there's a force recon guy in the gym, and I said, I'm really interested, this is the end of my coaching career, and I've been fairly successful with my coaching. I'm like, how do I get people, how do you motivate people? I think the military is the best example to use for motivation, because they have people going into harm's way willingly without holding a gun there. It's like, how do you get those people to be, how do you encourage that braveness? The guy goes, it's a five-paragraph order. I go, what's the five-paragraph order? And the five-paragraph order was pretty simple. There was five points he said. Any operation that we do, he was a trainer, he said like, I'll interview trainees, they'll say to me, I'll ask them a question. There's a tank out there in that field. How are you going to take that tank out? The guy who says, I'm going to run over to the tank, throw a grenade down the lid and blow it up, was out of the class immediately. The guy who said, I'm going to sit in the grass, I'm going to watch the tank, I'm going to see where it goes, see what it does, see how it operates over several days, see what the patterns are, that guy was in my, in my class. So that was how he opened the conversation. I'll try to make this quick, but everybody will think this is, it's a good lesson. So he said, so what is this five-paragraph order? What is your motivation? He said, well, it's very simple. You have reconnaissance, planning, determining your lines of communication, actioning, regroup and debrief. That was really how the decision-making process was described to me. I was like, I'm sold. I'm pretty much going to use that now for most things that I do. That's how I would encourage people to make decisions.
Thank you. Johnny?
Ditto. And, you know, Rob's, basically, he basically put out all the good points. And you have to think about what you're going to do. You have to observe. You have to have a plan. You have to collaborate. Communication's important. The weakest part of any op is always communication. It's always going to be the worst part, because we don't communicate, even when we're sitting in the same room. So Rob's got it. I do think that it's important to make a decision. I've made a couple of bad decisions in my day, but you know what? If you're standing there and you're looking out the window and you're trying to make the decision on what you're going to do, and you keep looking out the window, and you keep looking out the window, and you don't make a decision, sometimes not making a decision is the worst decision.
Thank you. Kirk?
Well, when I make decisions, I would certainly determine who it benefits. Then the second process would be, who does it not benefit, or does it hurt anybody? And then probably throw along that there's also a cost. Is it emotional or just physical costs? Or, I'm just talking with kids and I used to policies type like that. So for me, it's, yeah, it's the, that's my process I would use.
Thank you. Oh, whose turn is it? There we are. Johnny, if the school board were to receive a request that would significantly impact the direction of the district, how would you handle such a request, given that the school board is involved in a new strategic plan?
We receive a request significantly impacting the direction of the district? How do you handle that request? Prudently. I think what you would have to do is you would have to be prudent. You'd have to look at all the information, make the determination, and basically collaborate to say, are we going in the right direction? You just can't, can't go off half-cocked. So I think you would have to be prudent.
Okay, thank you. Kirk?
I would certainly have to know if it's something that is going to be addressed in the strategic plan, if it, I assume if you had all the categories of what that plan was going to be, you could possibly try to make some determination. But otherwise, I would just say, you have to wait. Because a strategic plan, obviously, is you're getting a lot of citizen input, a lot of expert input, whereas you won't have that if somebody just comes in and asks you for a quick decision.
Thank you. Rob?
I would encourage that we, as a board, would defer that decision-making process to the superintendent and the key administration of the district. I think that we would have to oversee that and get recommendation from them, but for the board to single-handedly come up with a decision that would significantly change direction would not be a prudent action. I think that it would have to be from the people within the system who are on the ground doing the work to get the data and information from them in order to make an informed decision or no decision at all.
Thank you. Kirk, what significant issues do you see the school district facing in the coming years?
Teachers. I know there's probably going to be a good retirement program out there. Not that I blame them, but I think filling those positions, I don't know that it's going to be difficult, but it's something we have to look forward to. Obviously, you know, housing in the community for teachers, I know sometimes that's a little bit difficult. So I know for us to, I know our community is a big draw, you know, it's a great place to live, and hopefully it can be such that we could attract teachers to come here. We will need, actually, the new innovative thinkers, you know, to move into the valley, so that. And then the only other issue I see is, I've seen it in other states where lawyers are trying to decide now what teachers should be in the schools, you know, which is kind of scary, but.
Thank you. Rob?
I'm not sure of the politics of education within Idaho to the level I could answer this clearly, but I can see the fact that this district probably sits within the top 10% of per pupil funding in the nation, that the equitability across the board for the state could become an issue. I think there could be a drain of funds from here to other places, and we would have to be prepared and plan for those kinds of initiatives coming along. I faced that in Park City. That's an ongoing battle, and the president of the school board is a friend of mine there through all the things I did, and he was constantly going down to the State House fighting back the equalization of funding across the board. I think we're very fortunate to be where we are, and the funds we have are fortunate. I think that's an issue. I don't see that going away. I'm not sure how the state will manage that, but that's something that would probably concern me moving forward. You know, on an educational level, I think how we educate for the new world that we're in, and how we teach, what our methodology of teaching is, how we utilize online resources, traditional classroom resources, how we put together curriculum that blends all of those things, or do we want to do that? That's a pretty significant issue moving forward. What is the level, what role is technology going to play in that? And how much are we going to rely on that? Do we really need that? There, you know, that's an educational issue on the front. I'm sure there's others, too. I think that they'll, with the great amount of resource that the district has, there'll always be the conversation, okay, do we need to have better buildings? Do we need to go into human resource? Where are we going to go with things, you know, as we move forward? I think those are probably always been issues, but that, those are, those are what I would see as significant issues.
Thank you. Johnny?
Well, I know that, and again, I was on the inside track, so I had a little bit more on this, but 50% of our population of teachers in the school district are going to be eligible for retirement in the next five years. So with that in mind, it's like, where are we going to find our replacements? And again, as mentioned before, you know, this is a great place to live. It's really expensive. And when you're an incoming teacher, the salary doesn't necessarily match up with the ability to live here. Again, having been involved or been a part or a fly on the wall when we hire new teachers, you know, being able to provide a second source of income for the spouse within the school district sometimes is to make it or break it to get people here. So I think that's, you know, that's going to be an issue. I think, and again, as mentioned, you know, technology is coming forward. I worked in the technology part of the school, so I see all the things that we're doing. But again, it comes with a cost. So the more we delve into technology, and again, purchasing part of it's not the part that you have to worry about, it's the maintenance and repair, you know, because you give a kid a Chromebook, and it goes out in one piece, it doesn't necessarily come back in one piece. And, you know, to a certain extent, if you have to start replacing 10%, 20%, 30% of your electronics or your technology that you're providing, again, it's budgetary. We had a huge levy that we've been benefiting from. However, that's going to go away. And then when that does go away, then the next, the next step is, well, where do we get the funds? I've had this conversation with teachers. They're concerned about their salary because they, you know, they wonder, you know, if we're going to be able to pay them based on, you know, what we can raise. So money's an issue, technology, replacing teachers, those. And again, just looking forward, as I tend to do, I think those are free, you know, right off the top. So it's going to be a busy time, and it's going to take some careful and prudent planning, and hopefully planning forward, because I think the more forward you plan, it's a lot easier to step over those logs that you're not going to plan for. So at the end of the day, if you're already two months out, or three months out, or four months out, I always tell my kids, it's five. It's five minutes, it's five days, it's five weeks, it's five months, it's five years. Start at five minutes and plan. And when you can do that, then go to five days. And when you can do that, you go to five weeks, and then five months, and then five years. I have a five-year plan. Took me a while to figure it out, but I do. And I think that's how we have to look at this stuff. You've got to be out in front of it, because those other logs, they're going to roll up on you. And if you're not looking forward ahead enough, it's the little ones that are going to trip you up. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of my questions, and they're not my questions, by the way. I'm asking them for the board. But we're now to the place where I'm going to defer to the board to see if they have any follow-up questions for all of you.
Go ahead and open it up for any follow-up questions.
I have two. I have one for one specific candidate about a comment that was made and one general question. So I'll just start with the first one. Rob, you had talked about being involved with bringing a charter school forward that was a private school?
Yes.
And that you had attempted to do that through a specific school district dependent, but it ended up going to the state. Could you very briefly talk about why you ended up not doing it through the school district and went to the state instead?
I would love to. That's the anecdote I was alluding to in part of my conversation. So I had a very good relationship with the superintendent within the district that my, I shouldn't say my, the independent school that I was responsible for was in, because we felt, we helped him out. Like, we basically gave an alternative to the normal system that was viable, that solved the big problem for the public school. So when he first came in, he was like, why don't you guys be a charter school? Why don't you be a charter school? I'm okay, I'm okay, I'm okay, I'm okay. Right, we're okay, we're okay. Then the recession came along, and then, you know, as being an itchy school, it was really difficult to keep the sheet balanced and to keep the thing alive, because disposable income was gone. At, you know, at 17, 18,000 a year, it was a challenge to keep that ball rolling. So I went back to him and said, Ray, what do you think? Yeah, let's try and do it. Let's do it. So we put together the application, worked in concert with him. I was to present the application to the school board. On October 8th, he stepped down from his position on September 30th. I was presenting to a board that was led by an interim superintendent who, as understandably should have, not taken any stance on anything when you asked about, you asked a question earlier about transition and how you manage that, they did the prudent thing and said, back burner, we're not, we're not going there. We're not going to touch that. This is not something we're interested in. Had Ray been in his position, we would have moved forward, we would have had it. But it leads me to the other anecdote, where as a responsible board member, I presented an, you know, 150-page application to the district. Three of them, actually, I asked them outright if they had read the application, and they had not. And that's where I would bring to you, I guarantee you, I'm going to read everything that gets sent to me, because that was, I was appalled, right? Like, as a school teacher, you give homework, you expect the homework gets done before you have your class, so to speak. So that's where, that's where the district dependent thing fell apart. There was too long of a timeframe. We'd done all the work to put the thing together. We'd worked in concert with the state and the district to craft the whole thing. So then the lady who was the state office of education thought we were a poster child for charter schools, because it was actually practical, because it was a program that was so unique that it fit the mission of what charter schools should do. Just wasn't an alternative, it was actually a completely different model that suited a special population of people, which is what charter schools are really supposed to do. So that's why we got through the state system, and the school's tripled in enrollment and is thriving and is in new building, and I feel really good about where I left them.
And I have a question for all of you. And I'll have John go first, if you don't mind. As a member of the board, who do you feel you represent?
I would say the, basically, the stakeholders within the county, Blaine County School District. That's who you have to represent.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to think we're representing the kids, because that's the ultimate goal of ours, but obviously, there's a couple of stepping stones between the kids and us. So I think the taxpayers is probably a... So I think the taxpayers is probably the ones we really need to represent. And hopefully, in such a way that the kids are getting the benefits as well, the representation.
Well, I think this is an interesting process, because this is actually for an appointment, which is not an elected role, which is unique. And so, currently, that's a hard question to answer, because obviously, Zone 4 would be the constituency that you'd be representing, because that's who would you, who would have voted for you. And were it to come to election, obviously, I would think that would be the main group that I would be reaching out to and listening to as far as my role as an elected official. So, in appointment, it's a little different, because I would be, I'm still serving them, but it's kind of like, you're, you're going to work for the entire constituency right now, because you've been put into this role in good faith by you. And so, kind of working with you and for you initially, because that's the group who elected whichever one of us get.
Thank you.
Is there any other follow-up questions for the board?
Don't think so. No?
On to Rob.
And do you?
I forgot to unmute my thing. With that, are there any questions from either three of you for, for the board?
Not at this time.
Not a moment for me? A lot, but I didn't.
With that, the board will go ahead and, and consider the responses from each of you applicants. I would, once again, thank you for volunteering, for volunteering your time and effort to, for the betterment of our students. It means a lot coming, to have three applicants coming from Zone 4, so, so thank you very much.
Yep. Exactly. Yeah.
The board will, at this time, go ahead and consider the responses, and will go ahead and mark a ballot. You're free to stay. You're also, if you, Mr. Or Johnny, you mentioned you also have other recommendations as well, so you're free to leave. At this time, we'll go ahead and mark that, and see what, what the outcome of that first initial ballot is. Trustee Graves?
Can I just, I just want to thank all of you for putting yourselves out there, and for being open to this appointment. It's, it's a big job, it's a big commitment, so I really appreciate all of you coming forth and going through this process. It's not easy. I did this four years ago for an appointment process, and sat right there, so I know it's, it's not easy to do, and I really appreciate all three of you coming, and any one of you would make an excellent school board member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we all share what Catherine just said.
Yes, yes. And I just, this is something that, and I think that I even said it when we went through our process with Gwen Carroll, you know, this position is, of course, as we all know, pretty thankless, time-consuming, doesn't pay. I mean, why would you do it? Well, there's a lot of reasons, and I, I'm sure you've thought of them, but in terms of numbers, there's 3,400 kids, 3,400 parents, 600 employees, so one out of three people in this valley, in this county, are directly impacted by the decisions made by five people, basically. The other thing is that the, the budget is one and a half times larger than all the municipalities and the county combined. So, I really appreciate you stepping forward. It's a great responsibility, and it's, I think, worth it, so appreciate it.
All right. The board, go ahead and feel free to take your time. Have the ballots in front of you. And when you have it completed, please go ahead and sign it and hand that in to Lori.
I know. I was thinking about...
Actually, I have Nora McDonald in my head with a big hat.
Oh, yeah.
Lori.
Did they already do theirs? Yeah.
Three-year-olds. I'm going to be getting a male dog.
A male dog. A male. Just even out the outdoor.
Time for boy.
You know women in the bathroom.
I saw that. Okay. I'll tell you what, I'll give you a few minutes, if you don't mind, actually, it affects my son, because...
I'm going to bring up, get them up to about two guys.
Do you guys want us to, like, leave you alone?
No. No, we're not allowed to talk, so.
Okay.
Yep.
There's an interesting meeting, Moving 5B Forward after this, at 7:30. I'm going to try and go.
I've never been able to. I don't get that recognition, only, it's funny, there's 200 sunken vessels on the east coast of the United States, all mergers and shoves, all in the war, one, two. And he didn't recognize me as being part of, you know, just getting recognized as being part of that. Well, no, we're just...
Oh, thanks.
So, consequently, we've been in a lot of trouble lately. I imagine, outsourced. Was that, yes, we've been outsourced. No, I didn't work with them, but, you know, we worked in the same... He's living in the second child, but now over there at the California parent.
Okay, I'd just like to remind the board, after that little recess, that we are back in, in public, open meetings, so, anything will be on the record.
I ride past it quite a bit. I'm a little highwayman. I developed a subdivision from 98, it's called Sociafe Ranch, just north of Hail. So it borders, kind of, a lot, it's on the east side of 75.
Can I ask one favor, as, as the board's thinking and considering? If you're, feel free to, to speak, but if you would mind stepping out to the hall, if that's okay, where this is still is a public meeting, appreciate it.
This might take me a minute, so...
Catherine's a thinker. Yes. Yes, yes. If you do want to walk out, we can call you back in before we...
There's a lot of information.
Should I just hold it up and wait for the picker to come by?
That's how I make all my decisions.
Pamela, I like your hair. It's great, it's great.
I really liked their website. I think it's gorgeous. She really stepped it up. I just need to find out when this meeting is.
No, I was first. What? I thought I was first. So, Blaine County Annex Building. It's Moving 5B Forward, this thing. Are you going to go to that, or?
I'm going to.
Okay. Yeah, right. I know Catherine's going to that, yeah. Going to what? The band concert. There's a, there's two meetings, there's the band concert, and then there's something called Moving 5B Forward. Tonight? Yeah, at the Annex. County. Oh. And the band concert's at the community campus? At 7? But the other thing is at 7:30. Depends on how, all I've had is the chocolate bar, so I might have to go home and... I stole a snack from the kitchen earlier. Oh, yeah, good. And I had a Frappuccino, which I've never had. But I needed something in my stomach. Yeah. It's been a movie day.
Mm-hmm. You're just going to see what you're reading. You're just going to see...
It's going to be in the paper with the stats.
I know. Like, do you know you're going to... Sean, you're just going to see what you're reading is, and then with Gary's request, he gets what he wants.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a tie.
I know, I know. When he said, we asked that, it's not a tie. He's just going to hold everybody in suspense.
Then she did a walk with, then she did a walk with another friend.
Sorry, Blaine, my dog ate my homework.
All right. I'd like to welcome you back in. Thank you for giving us the, the time to, to consider the responses and to prudently think through the, what's best for the, the district and the kids. So, at this time, I'm, I'm pleased to announce that the, the board has a, has a majority and has come to a decision. And do I hear a motion to appoint Mr. Rob Clayton to the Board of Trustees to serve out the remainder of the Zone 4 until 2017?
July 17.
July 2017.
I'll make that motion.
I don't think we...
I'll make that motion. Sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion deliberation? Roll call vote? Trustee Graves?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Swirl?
Aye.
Trustee Benyon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Immediately.
We have a meeting right now.
Thank you both to you two.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to say again, this was amazing. This, your answers were all amazing. I felt like, you know, you just knocked it out of the park, and so I wanted to thank everybody. It would have been a pleasure to work with any of you.
Thank you. Trustee Baker?
Well, just to kind of go on what Liz just said, I would agree with what she said, but also understand that one of the big factors for me in making the decision was looking at the dynamics of the board now, in which each of you bring, and trying to create that diversity of perspective. And so, you know, I just really appreciate, and like she said, couldn't have been more pleased with our panel of all three of you, and I just really appreciate you taking the time to come out and be considered for this position.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your dedication and your volunteerism. Oh, hold on one second, real quick, before we...
Hold on.
Mr. Clayton? We will have the swearing-in at our next meeting, which will be December 9th. Lori, next Tuesday, and packets went out last night, so Lori will email that to you.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Kirk. Appreciate that.
All right. Board, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Welcome.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Catherine, you need to turn both. The meeting is over.
Thanks, Lori.
You need to come and say it. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.[1764.13]